All right, 7 o'clock, we will call the planning board meeting to order. First order of business is the approval of minutes for the March 14th meeting. There was, I think, two changes to the original set that was sent out as far as correction of attendance and a person's name. Other than that, I think they look very good, so I will make a motion that we accept the minutes of the time the secretary would have noted.
Second.
Discussion, all in favor? Aye. Opposed? Abstained, so moved. I'm going to change the order of the agenda and take care of the Eldon Homes first to get that out of the way before we move into the plat, or into the long due discussion on the seeker. We have a proposal to waive the hearing and allow the chairman to sign the final plat for section C. What I observed, looking at what Karen sent us in the original, and Al, if there appeared to be, there were no significant changes, in fact, it looked like the original preliminary plat we approved.
Yes, Dan is gonna make a couple changes before we file this, in regards to the lot line between Lot 27 and Lot 28, which I don't see a problem with. It's gonna add some frontage to Lot 28, take some frontage away from Lot 27, and change the side yard, the angle of the side yard line a bit. So Lot 28 will be a bit smaller, and Lot 27 will end up being a bit larger.
Same acreage, just moving a lot line.
Basically, yeah.
Until that's done.
Until that's done, exactly. Yeah, until the, so revised plat reflecting that change, the developer would like to have a, would just make a contingent of receiving that plat, and the ads built around, we're still waiting on two, but that's.
All right, but we will go ahead with the resolution to waive the hearing, and I'll put that contingency in.
Makes sense to me. You okay with that, Dan? Or you wanna make any other changes?
I don't.
No three-for-two lot swaps, or?
Adulterate just a little minute, I made some comments to Karen and to Tim and your code officer. For over 15 years now, I've worked with the Towneley Center, our project was directed or managed by Steve Sager. And for those of you who might know Steve, he's... So it was my hopes to get some type of a resolution or proclamation from your planning board or your town board acknowledging all the service he's done in the Towneley Center over his career, but... Still encourage the Towneley Center to do some type of proclamation and maybe have it sent to his house, so his daughters could see it. I'm aware of some things that need to be taken care of before the map will actually be signed by the chairman, but I trust that Al will make sure that it's not signed until it's in the format that the town needs to see it.
Certainly would have no problem with the planning board providing a proclamation for him.
I think that's something that the planning board and the town board should probably do in conjunction, and just say, I'm sure his daughters would really appreciate it. He was a pleasure to work with, and he was responsible for all of our communities here in Leicenter.
All right, I'll make the following resolution. Resolve that the planning board authorizes the chairperson to review the final plat for the River Grove Phase 2C subdivision application of Eldon Homes for property located at lots 24 through 31 and lots 42 through 45, Tulip Tree Path, Walens Hill, New York, part of Military Lot Number 61 and part of Tax Map Number 081 dot 2 dash 01 dash 01 dot 1. And finding that all modifications and conditions have been met, the board authorizes the chairperson to waive the final plat public hearing and sign the final plat contingent upon the town receiving a revised final plat, including the items that were addressed here tonight with regard to changes to lot lines. Do I have a second?
Second.
Discussion?
One question, both the lots after this change would be legal lines.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
All those in favor? Aye. Opposed? Abstained, so moved. Thank you very much, folks. Thank you.
Thanks, Dan.
Our next item is site plan review with regards to long view radisson. And this evening, what we will be doing is we will be going through the Part II seeker form, to the extent we're capable of doing it this time, because we're still lacking some information. And I will ask our attorney to take us through this. Once we have completed tonight, there will be no action taken, because the seeker will not be approved tonight. And I will ask the, our attorney to draft a resolution for our May meeting to approve the seeker. But that will again depend on if we have all the necessary material from the builder, the applicant, with regard to wetland delineations and a couple other items. So at this time, come here again.
So I will read each question, and then we'll just discuss each question as we go through. And the first question for each section will be a yes or no question. If the answer is yes, we'll move to the subsection. And for those, our options are either no or small impact may occur, or moderate to large impact may occur. So we'll start with impact on land. The proposed action may involve construction on or physical alteration of the land surface of the proposed site, yes or no?
Definitely yes.
Okay. So for the subsections, a proposed action may involve construction on land where depth to water table is less than three feet, either no or small impact may occur, or moderate to large impact may occur.
Al?
So there is, there is, there is a water table within three feet of grade there, in certain locations, especially adjacent to the wetlands. However, there is no grading to a depth greater than three feet in areas where you have shallow water tables. So there should be no noticeable effect on groundwater related to earthwork at the site.
So no structures being proposed have basements?
They do, however, that's just a sump pump issue. It's not gonna change the water table. They're not putting in footer drains per se to, or well points, or something like that to lower the water table artificially.
Aren't they obligated by code to put in a footer drain?
They are, and it would go to a sump pump. I'm saying a gravity drain to, like a curtain drain to, or a pump to lower the groundwater table over the whole site, and that is not intended.
How much of the site, if we know it, is the three foot to water table?
I mean, anything adjacent to those wetlands is.
So all of it's?
Yeah, I mean, a lot of it certainly is, yeah.
But there would be no buildings setting?
Well, there'll be basements on some of the buildings, for sure. Actually, I don't know if they'll put basements in the apartments, I'd assume not, but it's not going to impact the groundwater elevation, what they are intending to do. I don't see how it would be a large impact, how's that?
So you're basically saying small impact may occur?
Correct. Then you're certainly not changing the elevation of the water in the wetlands, and you're certainly not changing the elevation of the water in the Seneca River.
I don't think you're changing the elevation of the water in the wetland, but.
We're not gonna lower the water table by putting in basements, because you're gonna drain them either into the wetlands or back into the ground.
Well, if the water table is less than three feet, and your foundation is greater than three feet, that would mean that either you're lowering the water table, or you're gonna be pumping year-round from those sump pumps.
Some houses are like that.
A lot of houses are radisson like that.
My neighbor's house is like that. My sump pump doesn't run off, there's a run on all the time.
Very common occurrence in that.
Like, the water's just going right back out to the back swell and draining into the ground.
Yeah. Okay.
Okay, I'll read.
That'd be small impact may occur.
Okay. Next question, the proposed action may involve construction on slopes of 15% or greater.
I don't believe this.
Yeah, there's a couple of banks there, but we're a lot of those.
We'll go with no?
Yep. That's a no.
Okay. The proposed action may involve construction on land where bedrock is exposed or generally within five feet of existing ground surface.
No exposed bedrock, none more of, nor is any of any experience in the construction of it. Well, other than some of the sanitary sewer, we got into a little bit of rock when we came across River Road, but that was at quite a depth.
So that would be a no.
Okay. The proposed action may involve the excavation and removal of more than 1,000 tons of natural material.
I believe this is an import site, right, Julie?
Yeah, we're not taking it out, though. It might be moving around, but we're not taking it off, so it's not removed.
So that's a no.
The proposed action may involve construction that continues for more than one year or in multiple phases?
Yep. Will be phased, right?
But it's not a significant impact, because there's been construction over there for the past eight years.
Yeah, I don't see how it has an impact on the bottom.
The proposed action may result in increased erosion, whether from physical disturbance or vegetation removal, including from treatment by herbicides?
Small, but no impact, simply because they'll have erosion containment control practices.
That would have to do with a?
And no herbicide.
No herbicide.
Right.
Okay, the proposed action is or may be located within a coastal erosion hazard area?
That's a no.
And are there any other impacts on land that we want to note?
None of this stuff.
Okay. Okay, so the next section is impact on geological features. So this is a yes or no question. The proposed action may result in the modification or destruction of or inhibit access to any unique unusual landforms on the site. Examples cliffs, dunes, minerals, fossils, caves.
Not to any other way.
That's a no.
Okay, that's a no. Then we can move on to the next section. That's impacts on surface water. The proposed action may affect one or more wetlands or other surface water bodies, examples streams, rivers, ponds, or lakes.
Yes.
Yes.
It's gotta be a yes.
Yep.
Yeah.
Okay, so we'll go to the subquestions. The first being, the proposed action may create a new water body?
There will be stormwater ponds created by the development, however, they're not a significant increase in surface water.
So no or small impact, that's a no. Okay. Next question, the proposed action may result in an increase or decrease of over 10% or more than a 10-acre increase or decrease in the surface area of any body of water.
No.
And what? The proposed action may involve dredging more than 100 cubic yards of material from a wetland or water body.
No.
Is that a no?
No, it's a no.
Okay. The proposed action may involve construction within or adjoining a freshwater or tidal wetland, or in the bed or banks of any other water body.
There will be construction for wetlands and a wetland permit required for crossings, however, a wetland permit was previously issued for the site, and it, the impacts are permitted essentially at this time, once they get a determination letter from our core engineers in D E C.
Howard, we need the updated letter.
Correct.
And the actual service figure would be less, and what was the permit was originally allotted?
At this time, we could say?
No or small.
No or small.
Okay. The next question, the proposed action may create turbidity in a water body either from upland erosion, runoff, or by disturbing bottom sediments.
No.
Is that a no?
That's a no.
The proposed action may include construction of one or more intakes for withdrawal of water from surface area, from surface water.
No.
The proposed action may include construction of one or more outfalls for discharge of wastewater to surface waters.
No.
Is that a no? The proposed action may cause soil erosion or otherwise create a source of stormwater discharge that may lead to siltation or other degradation of receiving water bodies.
No.
The proposed action may affect the water quality of any water bodies within or downstream of the site of the proposed action.
No.
Should be no.
The proposed action may involve the application of pesticides or herbicides in or around any water body.
No.
The proposed action may require the construction of new or expansion of existing wastewater treatment facilities.
No.
Are there any other impacts we wanna discuss all into the section? Okay, the next section is a yes or no question on the impact on groundwater. The proposed action may result in new or additional use of groundwater, or may have the potential to introduce contaminants to groundwater or an aquifer.
There's no known aquifer under this site, in its residential construction, so there should not be any potential risks of any kind of significant contamination, such as what would be associated with industrial type development.
No water wells, obviously.
No water wells.
Question, no.
No bulk storage.
Okay, so the answer is no, default?
No, correct.
So we can go to the next section. So yes or no question on the impact on flooding. The proposed action may result in development on land subject to flooding.
It's pretty much gotta be a yes, right?
Well, no, actually, they've relocated all of the structures, other than the wetland disturbance, or the wetland disturbance area are outside of the flood hazard area, flood hazard elevation.
Even the map that shows that the flood lots are within a few feet of corner of buildings and so forth?
Well, yeah, but as long as they're not placing fill in the flood hazard area, or the building isn't itself in the flood hazard area, there is not a impact. And at this time, they, and it would have to be a significant impact to impact the elevation of the Seneca River, if you know what I'm saying.
I guess. So what's the flood hazard on?
So that would be the 100-year flood.
100 years?
Yeah, yeah.
So all buildings are outside the 100-year flood?
Correct, yes.
Okay. The concern I have is, the last time we met, the engineers suggested that there might be movement of the buildings five to six feet from what we were looking at, and some of those, to me, look like, depending on how they move them, but are you content that they're not gonna move them?
I'm content that there will not be a significant impact on flooding.
Okay.
We're not gonna move into the flood.
Okay. But this question doesn't ask for impact. It just says the proposed action may result in development on land subject to flooding. That's the initial question.
The answer is they're not gonna build any buildings on?
Okay, as long as the answer is no.
That's a good point.
Okay, so no for this?
Yep.
Okay, so the next section is a yes or no question, first on impacts on air. The proposed action may include a state-regulated air emission source?
No.
Okay. Next question, impacts on plants and animals. The proposed action may result in a loss of flora or fauna, yes or no?
Yes.
Yes?
Oh, yes. Couple of mild trees.
Okay, so we'll go through the subquestions. The first one is, the proposed action may cause reduction in population or loss of individuals of any threatened or endangered species as listed by New York State or the federal government that use the site or are found on, over, or near the site.
No or small impact, I would recommend, there's, the lake sturgeon and the bald eagle are identified, they should not be disturbed by this type of construction.
What about the bats?
So it's in a bit Indiana bat, known Indiana bat area, however, there's been no known documentation of the bats being on the site at this point in time. So that limits the months of the year that they can cut trees down, but there's no documented instances of the bats being found on the site.
So that'd be, that'd be no to small.
No, okay. Next question, the proposed action may result in a reduction or degradation of any habitat used by any rare, threatened, or endangered species as listed by New York State or the federal government?
No.
No to small.
Next question, the proposed action may cause reduction in population or loss of individuals of any species of special concern or conservation need as listed by New York State or the federal government that use the site or are found on, over, or near the site.
No.
The proposed action may result in a reduction or degradation of any habitat used by any species of special concern and conservation need as listed by the New York State or the federal government.
No to small.
The proposed action may diminish the capacity of a registered national natural landmark to support the biological community it was established to protect. The proposed action may result in the removal of or ground disturbance in any portion of a designated significant natural community.
No.
The proposed action may substantially interfere with nesting, breeding, foraging, or overwintering habitat for the predominant species that occupy or use the project site.
No to small.
The proposed action requires the conversion of more than 10 acres of forest, grassland, or any other regionally or locally important habitat?
No.
The proposed action, commercial, industrial, or recreational projects only, involves the use of herbicides or pesticides, that's a no?
No. No herbicide.
Okay, so the next section, impact on agricultural resources, a yes or no question. The proposed action may impact agricultural resources?
No.
And go to the next section, the impact on aesthetic resources, is yes or no question? The land use of the proposed action are obviously different from or are in stark contrast to current land use patterns between the proposed project and a scenic or aesthetic resource.
I would say that the Seneca River qualifies as an aesthetic resource, and we should go through these questions.
So you're saying we should answer the question yes, then?
We should answer this question yes, and go through the subquestions.
Correct.
Okay. So the first of the subquestions is, the proposed action may be visible from any officially designated federal, state, or local scenic or aesthetic resource.
It is, it is, it may be visible from the Seneca River, however, it's not a significant impact, because there's houses and buildings all along the Seneca River.
I was just gonna say.
And it's not a designated federal, state, or local scenic or aesthetic resources?
Well, it is part of the New York State Canal Heritage Corridor.
I see. And our comprehensive land use plan.
Correct, identifies it as a scenic resource, yes.
So the answer is?
No to small impact.
Okay. The next question, the proposed action may result in the obstruction, elimination, or significant screening of one or more officially designated scenic views?
No.
The proposed action may be visible from publicly accessible vantage points, either seasonally or year-round?
No to small impact for both, I would say.
Yeah. Small impact, but not significant.
The situation or activity in which viewers are engaged while viewing the proposed action is either routine travel by residents, including travel to and from work, and there's also recreational or tourism-based activities?
I would say no to small impact on both, because certainly voters will see the site from the river.
Yeah.
Okay. Okay, the next question, the proposed action may cause a diminishment of the public enjoyment and appreciation of the designated aesthetic resource?
No to small.
No to small, yeah.
Next question, there are similar projects visible within the following distance of the proposed project. So we have zero to half of a mile, one-half to three miles, three to five miles, and five-plus miles.
I mean, the answers, yes.
I don't know how you answer that.
The answer, the answer to that, yes.
Apartments within three miles.
Yeah, there's those apartments on, back up to Gaskin Road, so I guess.
Would it be residential, though?
What's that?
Wouldn't it be residential?
It really is just residential, so you could say zero to half miles, and it's a no to small impact, because it's already, there's already residential structures visible from the river.
Okay.
No to small.
Okay, any other impacts we can discuss? Okay, the next question, a yes or no question on the impact of historic and archaeological resources. The proposed action may occur in or adjacent to a historic or archaeological resource?
So the, well.
Well, it's a gray area, right?
Yeah, yes, it is in an archaeological sensitive area, and they have done a Phase 1A and Phase 1B archaeologically study for the site, so I think we should answer yes to question 10, and go through the subsection questions because of that.
Okay, so they have, I thought we had 11 of them.
We do, but it's, because it's in an archaeological sensitive area, we should, as far as from a review of Part II of the seeker, we should go through the individual questions.
All right, you're right.
Okay, so the first of those is, the proposed action may occur wholly or partially within or substantially contiguous to any building's archaeological site or district, which is listed on the National or State Register of Historic Places, or that has been determined by the commissioner of the New York State Office of Parks, Recreation, and Historic Preservation to be eligible for listing on the State Register of Historic Places?
No to small impact.
That's definitely no.
The proposed action may occur wholly or partially within or substantially contiguous to an area designated as sensitive for archaeological sites on the New York State Historic Preservation Office Archaeological Site Inventory.
No, no to small impact.
The proposed action may occur wholly or partially within or substantially contiguous to an archaeological site not included on the New York Shipboat Inventory.
No, no to small.
Um, are there any other impacts to discuss? Okay, and then he does not apply here, so. Okay, so the next section, a yes or no question on impact on open space and recreation. The proposed action may result in a loss of recreational opportunities or reduction in an open space resource as designated in any adopted municipal open space plan.
No.
No.
No. Okay, um, the next section, yes or no on impact on critical environmental areas?
We don't have any.
We don't have any, so that's a no.
No. Okay, next section, impact on transportation. The proposed action may result in change to existing transportation systems.
We have traffic study.
Um, so, so we, we, we have a, received a traffic study from the developer. Well, this is a, a, a large increase in traffic for the actual development itself. It is not considered a large impact on River Road, the connecting road that this development will tie into. If you would like, I think that you could say yes to this and, and go through the questions, and, and I think that would probably be the appropriate thing to do, just to say that we looked at.
I would agree.
So the first of the sub-question is, the projected traffic increase may exceed capacity of an existing road network.
No.
The proposed action may result in the construction of paved parking area for five hundred or more vehicles.
No.
No.
The proposed action will degrade existing transit access?
No, not according to our traffic standards.
The proposed action will degrade existing pedestrian or bicycle accommodations?
No.
The proposed action may alter the present pattern of movement of people or goods?
No.
No to small.
Any other traffic impacts?
No.
Okay, the next section, yes or no on impact on energy? The proposed action may cause an increase in the use of any form of energy?
That's obviously yes, so we should go through the, the subsection questions.
It's a crazy question.
First is, the proposed action will require a new or upgrade to an existing substation.
No.
The proposed action will require the creation or extension of an energy transmission or supply system to serve more than fifty single or two-family residences or to serve a commercial or industrial use.
No.
There's not fifty units, right?
Well, there's fifty, but they're not, uh, uh, fifty single-family or two-family residences.
They're not fifty buildings.
They're not fifty buildings.
So we'll do no on that one?
No to small. Yeah, it's no.
The next one is, the proposed action may utilize more than twenty-five hundred megawatt hours per year of electricity.
How many units?
A hundred and, is, what is it, Julian, a hundred and eighty-seven units? Hundred and sixty-three units.
Oh, oh, I'm sorry.
And what was estimated kilowatt hours, uh, uh?
Yeah, that's what I was looking at.
Uh, G F R, right there, here.
I, I, I don't think it's going to come close.
No, it's not.
No.
No, 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 no.
No, I don't.
Twenty-five hundred megawatt.
Yeah.
Megawatt hours.
Yeah, it's not even less.
No, no.
So no? Okay, the proposed action may involve heating and cooling of more than one hundred thousand square feet of building area when, when completed?
No to small impact.
Any other energy impacts?
No.
Next section, impact on noise, odor, and light. A yes or no question? The proposed action may result in an increase in noise, odors, or outdoor lighting?
There will be proposed light, uh, there will be lighting in the parking lots of apartment buildings and, and on the, the sides of the apartment buildings, so I think you have to answer yes to this and go through the questions.
We would need a lighting plan at some point.
For sure.
Okay, so the first of these questions is, the proposed action may produce sound above noise levels established by local regulation.
No.
The proposed action may result in blasting within fifteen hundred feet of any residence, hospital, school, licensed daycare, or nursing home.
No.
No blast.
The proposed action may result in routine odors for more than one hour per day. The proposed action may result in light shining onto adjoining properties.
No.
No to small.
The proposed action may result in light, lighting creating sky glow brighter than existing area conditions.
No, these will be dark, spud-gygy, and plain lighting that's required by Tomco.
Yeah. No other impacts.
So the next section, yes or no question on impacts on human health? The proposed action may have an impact on human health from exposure to new or existing sources of contaminants?
No.
Uh, next section, a yes or no question, uh, on consistency with community plans? The proposed action is not consistent with adopted managers' plans.
No.
No. It is consistent.
Next question, um, consistency with community character? The proposed project is inconsistent with the existing community character.
So a lot has been said about this in letters that we've received from the public. So I do think that we, uh, should say yes and go through the questions, specifically because it, it has been brought up multiple times by the public. With that being said, if you, as we go through these questions, careful consideration needs to be made that this is in the Radisson P U D. This is allowed by the Radisson, uh, Residential Development Codes, Code, and, and it is, uh, you know, of a common multifamily housing is, is common within Radisson community.
And I know when we went through this with another project, and we sort of challenged the idea that it was inconsistent.
Correct.
It was pointed out to us by our attorney at that time that what they're talking about in character of the area, they're talking about Radisson.
Correct.
Not that specific spot, but the community Radisson. And if you look at it that way, you could answer it no.
No.
Because it's very consistent with the P U D plans.
Correct.
Layouts within Radisson, but I'm more than willing, if the board wants to, uh, answer yes and, and go through the individual.
I think we should.
Okay? We'll, we'll call it yes and we'll go through the individual.
So the first sub-question, uh, the proposed action may replace or eliminate existing facilities, structures, or areas of historic importance to the community.
No.
The proposed action may create a demand for additional community services, like schools, fire, uh, police.
No to small. No to small.
The proposed action may displace affordable or low-income housing in an area where there's a shortage of such housing.
No.
No.
The proposed action may interfere with the use or enjoyment of officially recognized or designated public resources.
No.
The proposed action is inconsistent with the predominant architectural scale and character.
No.
The proposed action is inconsistent with the character of the existing natural landscape.
No.
Any other impacts regarding community character? So that is the end of part two.
Thank you.
Should we do anything about visualization? That's the next step on this, somewhere. We don't actually have it in what we have in front of us.
So, so we've been provided with elevation, building front elevations and, and, uh, the, the buildings that are proposed.
Yeah.
We can certainly, the, the board certainly has a right to ask for photographic renderings of the buildings from various points in the site. I would say that we would want to have, uh, uh, renderings from the intersection of the existing road, uh, that is part of Phase Two, um, into where the, uh, uh, townhome portion of the project would be and towards, looking towards the, uh, apartments. And I think it would be prudent to have, uh, a rendering of the project looking into the site from.
From the river.
The river, from the river and from River Road at the Glacier Ridge intersection.
Correct.
I think those would be, are the, the spots that are, are prudent to, to have some visual renderings, uh, um, for consideration.
We would want that as part of the final package we look to for final action.
Correct.
Thank you, Al.
I would also add, maybe add a rear elevation to the attached, for the attached units.
Yeah, that's not a bad idea.
Just because.
Yeah. Yeah, they're going to be in, some in the backyard, yeah.
And that's usually where the aesthetics attached units are less interesting.
Yeah.
Right, so from the river, from the new intersection, from the current end of Longview Terrace?
Mm-hmm.
And what was that done?
Rear elevations of the, the attached units. The townhouse units. And then a rendering from Glacier Ridge looking into the site, uh, intersection of Glacier Ridge and River Road looking into the site.
Well, that, that completes our review of the Part Two SEACER. I'll ask our attorney to draft us a resolution, uh, for our May meeting to act on what we've come up with. At this point, um, it's my understanding that we are missing, uh, some key items that we will need to move forward as far as scheduling a public hearing and, and approving the SEACER resolution.
I, I, I believe we should have the determination letters from the wetland delineation prepared by Plumlee, um, from the Army Corps of Engineers in the D E C, and confirmation that the wetland permit will be renewed, uh, uh, by the Army Corps of Engineers, uh, for the, the modifications that are required for the revised layout.
I would agree with that.
I don't know if we'll get a letter from D E C because we're not D E C, but.
Yeah, but you're, you're going to have to renew the permits, so you're going to have to submit a, uh, joint application for permits, so the D E C is going to come out and look at them.
Yeah, we will need that before we can take final action on the SEACER. Does anyone else have, uh, any thoughts or questions at this point?
I would just remind that we were, his, came up with a number of items at the last meeting. I don't know whether any of them are still hanging, but I would suggest you look at the minutes.
Yep.
Both the ones from the last meeting and the December meeting.
We got a letter from Bass and, uh.
And the county comments, and make sure that all those things are being addressed and will be handed to us, uh, because at some point, if we're not, we're going to have to stop.
Understood.
Any, yeah. That concludes our meeting for tonight. I will make a motion that the meeting be adjourned.
Seacuer?
Thank you.
All in favor?
Aye.
All in favor? Thank you.
Thank you.